Everybody got their phones on silence? May I have your attention, please? Ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention, please? It's good to see this crowd here. This evening, we're about to start this meeting. But welcome, everyone. Good evening, Roma ISD family and guests. We're about to start this meeting. It is now 6:00 PM, and I call this regular meeting of the Roma Independent School District Board of Trustees being held this Wednesday, April 24, 2024, to order. Let the record show that this meeting was duly posted according to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. The first agenda item is roll call. Board Vice President, Mr. Jaime Escobar Senior.
Here.
Board Secretary, Mrs. Yadira E. Barrera.
Here.
Board Member, Mrs. Mary Louji Cruz.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Evie Garza Jr. Board Member, Mrs. Karina Moscorro.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Raul P. Moreno Jr. And myself, Board President, Mr. Ricardo E. Perez, present. Let the record show, we do have a quorum in attendance at this regular meeting. Agenda items two and three are the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation this evening will be delivered by trustee Mrs. Karina Moscorro, and the pledge will be led by trustee Mrs. Yadira E. Barrera. Would everyone please stand?
Will you please bow your heads? Thank you, Jesus, for another day of life, and thank you for all our blessings. We ask that you continue blessing us with health, food, shelter, and knowledge. We ask you to continue blessing our kids that are here with us today and continue guiding them while they prepare for a successful future. Please guide our meeting today and help us decide what is best for our school district in a fair and respectful manner. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Well, once again, we want to welcome everybody to this meeting. And it, our first agenda, our fourth agenda item is student-staff recognition. And we would like to, first of all, recognize Subletter A, Ramiro Barrera Middle School, 8th grade girls' basketball B-team district champions. I'm going to be calling, I call on our athletic director, Coach Max Habbecker Jr., to make these presentations. This will be followed by Roma Middle School and then Roma High School. So our superintendent will be down there to help with the presentation of medals and ribbons and things like that. Coach Habbecker.
Yes. Good evening, Superintendent Gonzalez, members of our school board. Thank you all for having us today. I'd like to start off by inviting our Ramiro Barrera 8th grade girls' basketball team up to the stage, please. Again, I'd like to congratulate our 8th grade girls' basketball team from Ramiro Barrera. Members of the team are Betsy Torres, Deanna Gonzalez, Fatima Valentín, Yuridia Garza, Leoneli Flores, Lorena Rios, Mariana Gonzalez, Mariana Rios, Marita García, Marta Cano, and Mia Quiroga. These young ladies put together a record of 5-1 in district, and they had an outstanding season. Congratulations to them and their coach, Cassandra Rodriguez. Next, I'd like to invite our 7th grade girls' A and B team basketball team from Roma Middle School. 7th grade A and B. Our 7th and 8th grade A and B team both went undefeated. Outstanding record, their coached by Roel Silva and Marta LaGarza. Members of the team include Alejandra Gonzalez, Angelina Ojosá, Cristel Garza, Delia Trevino, Emiléth Almargar, Katia De León, Miranda García, Miriam Pérez, Nahim Ramírez, Regina Muniz, Alexandra Sainz, Anayla Díaz, Alexa Montes, Analí García, Briana Isaguirre, Daniela Zapata, Dariana Teyes, Diami Vidal, Gisela Villanueva, Melanie García, Nelsia Alfaro, and Jessica Martínez. Again, our 7th grade A and B team undefeated champions. Next, I'd like to invite our 7th and 8th grade boys' districts, I'm sorry, Roma Middle School district champions coached by Alexandra Sainz. Also, another undefeated season. 7th and 8th grade boy soccer from Roma Middle School. Please come up to the stage. Members of the team include Abadriel Ramírez, Abel Estrada, Alejandro Gutiérrez, Alexis Barrera, Amauri Aguilar, Ángel Alvarado, Ángel Hernández, César Vázquez, Eduardo Zaldaña, Fabián Rodríguez, Francisco García, Ian García, Isaac Barrera, Jare Ramírez, Jesús López, José Alvarado, José Álvarez, José Lozano, Julián Urbano, Kevin Ramírez, Luis Alanís, Martín Pérez, Matías Ramos, Pedro Villarreal, René Garza, Ricardo Salinas, Rolando López, Saúl Ciomón, Sebastian García, Sebastian Rodríguez, Servando López, Steven Trevino, Victor Ramírez, 7th and 8th grade RMS undefeated boy soccer champions. At this time, I would like to invite our Roma Middle School 7th and 8th grade girls' soccer undefeated champions. Our girls' soccer team is coached by Coach Roel Barrera and Vanessa Almandarís. Members of our championship girls' soccer team include Yulaca Palacios, Angelí Flores, Hilary Aguilar, Mariana Maldonado, Camila Benítez, Daria Amaro, Alexandra Sainz, Melina Medrano, Briana Gonzalez, Ashley Robleero, Aileen Guzmán, Daila Peña, Eva Vallesa, Keila Ruiz, Angelina Inojosa, Lexi Ramírez, Briana Ávila, and Shailene Butler. Again, 7th and 8th grade girls' soccer undefeated champions. At this time, I would like to invite our Roma Middle School 8th grade baseball team coached by Jorge Garza and Fernando Garza. Our boys also had an undefeated district championship. Members of our Roma Middle School 8th grade baseball team include Juan Julián Trevino, Saúl Acosta, Ezra Gonzalez, Fernando Pompa, Elíasar Trevino, Daniel García, Artemio Díaz, Mario Barrera, Eric Sepulveda, Luis Moreno, Bruno Torres, Over Gómez, Osvaldo Garza, and Carlos Mondragón. I present to you our 8th grade boys undefeated district champions. I want to take this time to thank our two middle school principals, Mr. De Niro Gonzalez and Ms. Garza, who's back there in the back. They, there and their staff and their teachers do an excellent job promoting our kids to participate in many different type of extracurricular activities. And without their support, none of this would be available to our kids. And I want to make a point that up to now, and we still have a few sports left, our middle schools have combined for 20 district titles. Congratulations. Moving on to the high school, I want to invite our boys' swim team, who were district champs back-to-back. Our swim team is coached by Coach Clemente Martínez and Marisa Estrada. Members of our swim team include Ángel López, Emiliano Olivera, Jaime López, Jesse Ramón, Leo Canales, Luis Barrera, Pedro Garza, Rafael Muniz, Ryan Vázquez Canjiri, Salvador Gonzalez, and Vicente Salazar. These young men did an outstanding job. They went to the district swim meet in Laredo, and they blew everybody out of the water, literally. Congratulations, men. We're going to be moving on to our individual recognitions portion of the presentation. At this time, I would like to invite our volleyball team up. These are young ladies who received individual recognitions for their efforts. As you all know, our varsity volleyball team had an outstanding season this year, and with that comes these type of individual accolades. I'd like to start off by recognizing Eliza Martínez, who was voted as our district MVP. She earned All-Academic Team. She was an All-Area Defensive Blocker of the Year, and she was also voted onto the RGV All-Star Team. Also, our Outstanding Setter of the Year was Jayla Garza. And we had our first team All-District members were Madlen García and Ana Benítez. Second team All-District members were Paola Barba and Nailet Moreno. Earning honorable mention in honors was Aileen Rosa. We also had nine members of the volleyball team earn all-academic awards. It was Violeta Guerra, Brianda Bañales, Alexa Verastegui, Madlen García, Nailea López, Paola Barba, Ana Benítez, Nailet Moreno, and Jaylin Garza. That was all-academic, right there. And then finally, we had three young ladies that were voted onto the RGV All-Star Team, which was Eliza Martínez, Ana Cecilia Benítez, and Jayla Garza. Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations to Coach García and her staff. Up next, I would like to invite our boys and girls' swimming district champions in individual events. Adriana Reyes, Emiliano Olivera, Jaida Pérez, Nancy Ramírez, and Ryan Vázquez Canjiri. Up to the stage, please. These students earned individual district championships in their respective event. Adriana Reyes was district champion in the 100 breaststroke. Emiliano Olivera was the district champion in the 100 butterfly. Jaida Pérez was the overall district champion in diving. Nancy Ramírez won two district titles in the 200-meter individual medley and the 100-meter butterfly. And Ryan Canjiri won two district titles in the 100-meter backstroke and the 200-meter freestyle. Go ahead and stay up here, guys. I'm going to move on to the swimming regionals. The next, the next group of students were also swimmers and qualified to regionals as individuals. Adriana Canales, Adriana Reyes, Brenda Ramírez, Briseira Ramos, Carmine Ramírez, Dianati Moran, Eliza Martínez, Jaida Pérez, Melanie López, Mia Garza, Nancy Ramírez, and Natalia López. On the girls' side. And on the boys', we had Ángel López, Emiliano Olivera, Jaime López, Jesse Ramón, Leo Canales, Lucely Barrera, Pedro Garza, Rafael Muniz, Ryan Vázquez Canjiri, Salvador Gonzalez, and Vicente Salazar. In total, our swim program sent 23 individuals to regionals, which is outstanding. Up next, I'd like to invite our Roma High School girls' basketball team members that earned individual accolades. Janeila Johnson, Mariana Vela, Justice Ramsey, Madlen García, and Alexa Verastegui. Come on stage, please. Janeila Johnson earned a first-team All-District. Second-team All-District was Mariana Vela and Justice Ramsey. And honorable mention were Madlen García and Alexa Verastegui. The girls are coached by Coach Luis Navas. Congratulations, ladies. This time, I would like to invite our varsity boy soccer team members who received individual accolades. Up to the stage, please. Our soccer boys' accolades include José E. García, who was voted as Offensive Player of the Year of the district. First-team All-District, Omar García, Francisco Paz, Valentín Díaz. Second-team All-District, Alan García, Mario García, Oscar Tames. And honorable mention members were Erica Costa, Alex Robleero. Alex Robledo, and Santiago González. José García also led the district in goals scored. Congratulations. I would like to invite our members of the varsity girls' soccer team who received individual recognitions. Up to the stage, please. Our girls' soccer individual recognitions include: first-team All-District honors for Areli Oyarides and Yarita Ramírez; second-team All-District honors for Dana Perales, Sarayi Seledón; honorable mention honors for Dana Perales as well. And then we had three members earn All-District academic honors: Fernández Salazar, Emi Sanchez, and Gema Miranda. Congratulations. Up next, I'd like to invite our boys' track and field individual recognition honors. Boys' track and field. All the boys. Our boys' individual accolades include: a four-time district champion in the 100-meter dash, Diego Rodríguez. Who, Diego also won the 200-meter dash and is currently... He currently won the 100-meter dash at the regional, so he's the regional champion. He's going into state ranked number four in the state. Diego also set school records in the 100-meter dash with a 10.57 and the 200-meter dash with a 21.45. Congratulations, young man. Other district champs include a freshman, Santiago Martínez, who won the high jump. And our 4x100-meter relay, which includes José Macías, Elías Mejorado, Luis Peña, and Diego Rodríguez, that ran an impressive 42.8 at district. Other area qualifiers include Luis Peña, José Macías, Diego Rodríguez, Elías Mejorado, Fred García, Alexandra Miranda, Marcos Miranda, Artemio Belmontes, Christian Elisondo, Santiago Martínez, Gael González, Sergio Barrera. Of those young men, we had Luis Peña, José Macías, Diego Rodríguez, and Elías Mejorado, and Artemio Belmontes, and Christian Elisondo advanced to regionals. Congratulations. Great season. Up next, I'd like to invite our girls' track members for individual recognitions: Ana Cecilia Benítez and Cielo Hernández. As a senior, Ana Cecilia Benítez earned an area qualification by throwing the discus. And Cielo Hernández, a freshman, won the district championship in discus. Congratulations to them and their coaches. Up next, I'd like to recognize our regional qualifiers for boys' wrestling. Individual recognitions include regional qualifiers: Angelo Choa, Julio Cabrera, and Juan C. Molina. Wrestling is different because wrestling includes 19 teams in our district, so it's very difficult to earn spots like this. And these young men did a great job representing our school, and they did an outstanding job competing every time they were out there. Congratulations. Up next, we'd like to recognize our regional qualifiers for boys' and girls' golf. Golf is one of those sports, also like wrestling, where it's difficult to advance. Only the top two teams advance, and then only the next two individuals. And we had an outstanding season on the boys' and girls' side, where we had a boy and girl advance to regionals, which is outstanding for our program. Congratulations. On the boys' side, the student is Natalia López, and on the girls' side, it's Abigail Oscovar. Last but not least, I would like to invite our boys' and girls' powerlifting program up to the stage. Our boys' and girls' powerlifting coaches include Mario Arce and Marisa Estrada. Members of the team that earned individual accolades are René Hernández, Kailin Pérez, Briséda Robles, Brisa Robles, Mariela Moreno, Clarissa García, Yaneli Garza, Melanie Peña, Janeila Benítez, Camila Costa, Ariam Benítez, and Cielo Hernández. We had some really, really outstanding performances individually as well, where we had a regional and state qualifier in Briséda Robles. Briséda Robles won the regional championship and also qualified to state. And finally, our student athlete, Kailin Pérez, was a regional qualifier and overall state champion. Kailin marks the third straight state champion for our girls' powerlifting program. We also had Briséda's sister, Brisa, who was also a regional qualifier and a state qualifier. Congratulations on an outstanding season and way to represent. Hopefully, we can continue our streak and we can keep it going with our state championships. And our final presentation, I would like to invite our boys' basketball individual recognition up to the stage. Our individual recognitions for boys' basketball include: first-team All-District Jadiah Baker; second-team All-District Fernando Lozano; second-team All-District and All-Academic Juan C. Sainz; honorable mention and All-Academic Josh Cruz; and other honorable mention honorees are David Galan and Nardo Sainz. Congratulations on your individual accomplishments. I want to thank our high school principal and his staff, and all the staff over at Roma High School for supporting all of our student athletes. And I want to thank the parents that are here in attendance. You know, without you all, support at home, none of this would be possible for your children. So, thank you very much. Again, I want to thank our board of trustees and our superintendent. Thank you for all you do, and we're going to continue to work hard for you guys.
Thank you, Coach. I know that a lot of us have already exited the building, but parents and family members that are here, would you please stand? Of all these athletes, any parents that are here, family members, please stand. Thank you so very much for everything that you do for your sons and daughters. With the athletic program, it takes a lot of sacrifice, I know. Waking up early, going to pick them up late, and things of that nature on Saturdays as well. So, thank you. Thank you very much for all your support, parents, and we really do appreciate it. Now, athletes that are still here? Wow, what a year. From middle school to high school. What a year. Want to congratulate all the coaches. A lot of times, it goes unnoticed, but coaches, without your dedication, being there every day, early and late, and on Saturdays as well. Thank you very much for everything that you do for Roma ISD and your individual responsibility, your individual program. And Coach Habecor. Coach Habecor, Athletic Director, thank you for being the leader, the leader of the athletic program. Principal Danette Garza and Principal Danelo González. Who am I forgetting? Dr. Guzmán, high school principal. Thank you. Without your support, without your support, your support is very, very important. And thank you so very much for everything that you do to make the athletic program in your respective campuses a priority with you as well as academics. This is an overall program, and it takes, like it's been said many times before, it takes a village. But you are the leaders. You are the leaders of your campus, so thank you very much for everything that you do. Ladies and gentlemen, we invite you and athletes, we invite you to stick around if you care to. But if you also would like to go out and celebrate, you may do so at this time. We appreciate you being here with us. This is always the favorite part of the meeting for every single trustee, is to see our students being highlighted. And we are extremely proud of you. Thank you very much for being with us here this evening.
I don't know, but it can't be compared because his is a meter and the other is 40-yard dash.
It's a fast time.
He went to see here.
He broke one more record? Yeah. Okay, at this time, we will continue with the business portion of our meeting. We'll go to agenda item number five, which are public comments. District Superintendent Mr. Cottrell Sanz Carlos Gonzalez Jr.
Yes, we have somebody signed up for public comments, and that's Lily Lopez from the United Way.
Before I give the podium to Ms. Lopez, I must, I'm required to read the following narrative. Comments shall be limited to five minutes per speaker, and speaker will be informed when he or she has one minute remaining. Speakers who engage in personal attacks or use insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language during the board meeting shall be ruled out of order by the presiding officer and have their presentation stopped. Any concerns or complaints regarding employees, public officials, students, or parents must be resolved via the appropriate complaint process stated in BED Local pursuant to 551.042 of the Texas Government Code. No board member or administrator may respond to a member of the public unless such response is a recitation of district policy or statement of specific information. Ladies and gentlemen, we have Ms. Lily Lopez. She is the United Way President, and she is going to make some presentations here. Go ahead, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you. Good evening. I hope you had a minute to rest your feet after all of those wonderful, amazing presentations. Thank you again for your time. I am here on behalf of our Board of Directors to present several awards that were presented at our annual awards banquet in March. And Mr. Gonzalez and Helen Escobar and a few other representatives from the school district attended the event. We are, I would like to begin by honoring Roma ISD, the Administration Department. They received the award for the highest per capita donations compared to all other departments at 16 school districts throughout Hidalgo and Starr Counties. So, the award was presented to Mr. Carlos Gonzalez, and I'd like to begin, you know, and ask everyone to please give yourselves a big round of applause. Another award that was presented was to Ms. Helen Escobar, who was recognized as the district coordinator compared of all of the school districts in Hidalgo and Starr County. So, I want to also acknowledge her and thank her so much for her dedication. I'm also going to list a couple of top performers, the districts that had the best campaigns this year. But I don't want to move forward without thanking all of our principals, all of our directors from the entire district, because it's really their support from the administration office, directors, professionals, educators, support staff. It's everyone's generosity and willing to learn about the United Way and being involved in United Way that makes a big difference. I'm going to list them, but I'd like to also take just a minute to tell you a little bit about some of the things that we're doing here at Roma ISD. And our top performers this year were Delia Garcia Elementary. Thank you very much. Lesson number one. Two, FJ Scott Elementary was our second top performer. And our third top performer was Roma Middle School. So, thank you. So, I think we place some information there at your seats, and I just want to read off a couple of things as reminders of some of the things, again, that we're doing in Starr County, just to assure you that everything that the district donates comes back to your community. So, first of all, 99% of what we raise states in Hidalgo and Starr Counties were the local United Way. I always tell people that where you live and give is where your money stays. If you're living in San Antonio or in Florida next year, and you are a United Way donor, your money would stay in that community. We serve approximately 183,000 residents in our two-county area. I want to mention our VIDA program, the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, because we are so proud of the partnership that we have had with Roma High School for over 10 years. Ms. Abby has worked with some of your high school students. They become advanced tax preparers and help throughout the tax season. Overall, we just wrap this up. In fact, Roma, you're going to have some of your high school students that join us in McAllen tomorrow for the awards banquet. But we helped 3,100 families so far. Their returns were 4.9 million, and we've saved the families 930,000. We have 13 students at Roma High School that have participated. They completed 156 volunteer hours in the months of March and April. They helped 213 families here in Roma. Their returns were over half a million, $512,000. So, again, thank you to Abby Torres and our principal at the high school. This year, we also launched the Youth Leadership Mentorship Program at the high school, and we're working with Mr. Romeo Rios as well. And you have juniors that are mentoring freshmen. They completed a 13-week, 13 sessions throughout the year, and each child that participates is receiving $100 in the next few weeks because they completed the program. And then lastly, we worked with the school district initially, but we launched the Latina Help Program with the help of the City of Roma. We have women that are beginning or have small businesses, and they also completed about six financial literacy and small business startup lessons. And so, these are some of the things that we do here in the community to help families succeed. And again, we couldn't do it without your support. So, again, I want to thank you on behalf of our Board of Directors, and I'd like to now ask you or invite you to please join me for a picture and the presentation of the awards.
So, we'll do the campuses first and the picture?
Okay.
Okay, the three campuses, you all are here, right? Representatives of the campus, if you can come over here and get your award and take the picture, and the board will be behind that. Okay.
I want to thank you, Ms. Lopez. Is she still here? Oh, there you are. Thank you so very much for your presentation, and it is a great opportunity for our district to be able to work with the United Way. We hope to continue doing this. Have a safe trip.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue with agenda item number six, which is consent agenda items 6A through 6I. We will have our district business manager, Mr. Pedro Alaniz, and our district tech and PIMS director, Mr. Manuel Garcia, available for any questions.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Alaniz, I just have a question on my page 37. It's the check number 063297. It says bus sales.
Yes.
We had already approved these, right?
Yes.
So...
Five buses.
So, yeah, finally, we were able to make the purchase?
Yes.
When are we expected to get them? Oh, we already have them?
Those were sales to who?
La Horn Bus Sales.
But sales to us? Not that we were selling our buses, our old buses?
No, no, we purchased five buses.
Any other questions for Mr. Alaniz? Thank you, Mr. Alaniz. The enrollment report, attendance report by Mr. Garcia. Anyone have any questions? From '23 to this year, we're, there's a 56 deficit, a 56 student deficit?
Yes, sir.
That's what it is?
April, April '23 and April '24, that day to that day.
Is that mostly because last year's class was the large one?
Well, again, when we compare a day to a day, we might have enrolled students that withdrew that day or enrolled that particular day. So, we might, if we compare a different day, the number might be different. So, I can't really tell you why that decreases there. But it depends on the day itself.
Well, it's not a major change.
Oh, no. Oh, no, no.
My understanding was that last year's senior class, graduating class, was one of our, not the large.
This year, I think it's going to be one of the largest ones. But yes, we have a larger, usually, our graduating class is larger than our incoming pre-K class.
Our graduating class is larger than our incoming freshman class?
Pre-K.
Oh, pre-K.
Pre-K. So, we compare the number of kids that leave to the number of kids that are coming in.
I see.
So, we pick up kids along the way, along the grade levels.
The high school, a comparison from last month to this month. I looked at the report that you presented last month. They lost a total of 16 students?
Yes. We have some withdrawals to the ING Center.
Again, to the ING. Okay. But not that they dropped out or...
Any other questions for Mr. Garcia? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alaniz and Mr. Garcia.
Sir, I just have, I just have one question, but it's not for Mr. Garcia, it's for Mr. Alaniz, or maybe to ask, why would an employee be buying basketballs? Like, why would an employee be buying basketballs when we have our department to buy basketballs?
Excuse me?
Why, why, why would one of our employees be buying basketballs? And we're reimbursing for purchase of basketballs, but doesn't that follow...
Maybe he didn't request a requisition. Maybe they didn't do a requisition, and it's on his own. We budget for the supplies.
Well, that's what I'm asking. So, we budget for supplies. So, why would be, it's not much, but why would an employee be buying basketballs?
I guess it's for the summer or the extra after-school programs. Maybe, maybe there's like, the weekends, there's programs that are not school-related. Maybe it's that.
That's not school-related?
That is school-related.
That is school-related.
No, I'm saying during the weekends. Yes, during the weekends. But, but they have a budget.
And they're being reimbursed for the purchase of that?
Yes. Happened before.
I've known of parents that buy equipment or whatever, and then they submit for reimbursement, and they get, and they get the money back.
But it's a minimal purchase, like small purchases.
Is that it, Mr. Moda?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So, just because of what they're saying, so if parents buy supplies, we're going to reimburse them?
If parents...
Well, they have to create a requisition, and once it's approved, then we can pay for it. But parents, no, they cannot buy supplies.
You just said that parents sometimes buy supplies and we reimburse them?
Not for individual use, but if it's for the team. I've known of one parent that got a reimbursement, not this year, last year.
Maybe to student activity accounts, maybe.
So, that's what I'm saying. So, if a parent buys something for a team, they're going to get reimbursed?
No. Well, maybe it's not to the activity account, but not to the school account. If it's a, it needs to be school-related and an actual vendor.
That's what I'm saying. If it's school-related and a parent buys equipment for a team that's for the school, we're going to reimburse them?
I don't think we should.
We should?
We shouldn't.
We should.
He doesn't think we should.
But we have.
Not to my recollection. I can tell you that.
By the way, I said last year that we did. That's what I'm saying, we have.
We need to check because...
We can check. That's what you want us to do. The question is there, so we can check.
But we're not supposed to...
But I'm not aware of it.
You're saying we shouldn't?
Right. We should.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Alaniz. Is there a motion?
I shall move that we approve the consent agenda that includes items A through I as being presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Cruz and seconded by trustee Escobar to approve agenda item number six as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain from, one of the bills under my name. And I abstain from a bill that's under my name and from Las Alitas.
I abstain from bills under my name and Star Molding LLC and Garcia Young Builder Supply.
And just for the record, that bill was for the... For the national convention.
For the convention, the national convention.
Yes, that is correct. Okay. The final tally is six in favor and none opposed. We have abstentions as indicated by trustees Barrera. We have abstentions as indicated by Trustees Barrera, Moscorro, and Moreno. So motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 7, ratification of the certification of the Certification of Provision of Instructional Materials 2024-2025 Survey. Our presenter will be our District Executive Director of Curriculum, Mrs. Diana Salinas. Mrs. Salinas?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Superintendent Gonzalez, members of the board, and guests. In accordance with Texas Education Code 31.1011, local education agencies are required to certify annually to the State Board of Education and the Commissioner that students have access to instructional materials covering all Texas essential knowledge and skills for all required subjects except physical education. Additionally, LEAs are required to certify that they protect against access to obscene or harmful content in compliance with the requirements for certification under the Children's Internet Protection Act, Section 28.002, Section 43.22 Penal Code, and other law or regulation that protects students from obscene or harmful content. This year's certification process requires the completion of the Certification 2024-25 Form, ratification by the LEA's Board of Trustees or governing body in an open, public, noticed meeting, and the submission of the Certification 2024-25 Survey, and uploading it and ratifying it, the certification again, form. So we are respectfully requesting approval of the 24-25 Certification Form. I believe it was uploaded to Board Book, so we're just asking for your approval.
For approval. Any questions for Mrs. Salinas regarding this agenda item? Well, thank you, Mrs. Salinas.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by Trustee Moscorro and seconded by Trustee Barrera to approve Agenda Item Number 7 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 8. Consideration Possible Action for Permission to Advertise for RFPs for Insurance Brokerage Services for Employee Voluntary Insurance Plans. Our presenter will be our District Business Manager, Mr. Pedro Alanis. Mr. Alanis?
Yes, we would like to... For permission to advertise for RFPs for insurance broker services for employee voluntary insurance plans. It will include voluntary insurances for dental, vision, basic life, and AD&amp;D, voluntary life and AD&amp;D, whole life, disability accident, critical illness, cancer, medical transport, and flexible spending accounts. The contract term will be from November 1st, 2024, through October 31st, 2027.
I'll give you the date?
November 1st, 2024, through October 31st, 2027. And it's renewed annually.
Who do we use right now?
It's Mr. Pedro Peña in insurance.
Okay. Local?
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Alanis? Thank you, Mr. Alanis.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 8 as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by Trustee Escobar and seconded by Trustee Barrera to approve or give approval for Agenda Item Number 8 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 9. Consideration Possible Action to Approve Budget Amendment Number 1. Our District Business Manager, Mr. Pedro Alanis, with the presentation.
Yes, we have prepared Budget Amendment Number 1 for your consideration and approval. That following our some updates regarding our budget, there's an estimated local revenues increase of $555,000, primarily attributed due to additional interest revenue and other miscellaneous revenue received. Our total state revenues will increase by $1,769,000. This increase includes the teacher incentive allotment grant we are going to receive from the state in the amount of 2,000... I'm sorry, $2,251,000, and a state revenue loss of approximately $482,000. That difference is $1,769,000. The lasting state revenue is due to state adjustment in property tax values and decrease in student enrollment. We anticipate an increase of $335,000 in the federal food service revenue, mainly for additional snacks and meals that have been offered to our students. The total increase in revenues is $2,659,500. We're also expecting increases in expenditures, particularly Function 11 instruction expenses in the amount of $3,699,750. The increase is primarily due to the teacher incentive allotment stipend, additional hiring of teachers, teacher aides, staff for our special education department, and substitute teacher pay, instructional materials and software previously funded by ESER funds. Other expenditure adjustment that we need to increase is $40,300 to our curriculum instructional study development, $31,000 increase in student school leadership, $22,400 increase in our truancy department, $314,400 addition to our health services department for classified expenses formerly funded by ESER, $420,000 increase in core curricular activities funding, primarily for Pan Mariachi and other core curricular activities, $125,000 increase in transportation, mainly due to inflation, $220,000 increase in food service department for additional equipment that we need for the department, $110,000 decrease in council budget, and $110,000 decrease in administration. And then we propose to transfer $1,500,000 to fund for construction projects. Our beginning fund balance was $43,723,939, and we're expecting to end at $40,230,189. Any questions?
You said... I thought the TIA was a grant, or it's money sent by the...
We have to record it in our general fund, both the revenue and the expense. And we plan to issue the payments in August. But we need a board to approve both the grant and the expense.
So what we're giving out, we're getting back?
Yes.
So it's like a wash?
Correct. And the district is going to keep 10%.
The district is keeping 10%?
Correct, yes.
And where's that 10% here? That's the... It's not showing here?
It's shown in revenue, but it's also shown in deduction in expenses.
So in the total increase of 2.65, the 10% is there from the TIA?
The total increase of 2... Yes. It's $2,251,000. And then we're going to pay 90% of that to our teachers.
So that's what I'm saying, so in that revenue, that 10% is already there?
Yes, it's shown in revenues.
And then you said Function 11, what... Who funds the Function 11?
Other teachers, teacher aides, and other teacher incentive allotments grants is going to be through that function, Function 11, for instruction.
So that increase... An increase of 3 million, that's going to be yearly?
No, that's for this year. For this year.
I know it's for this year, that's why I'm asking you. Is that going to be yearly? I don't think the 1.5, the 1.5 that's going to be transferred for school construction projects, is that just for projects in general? Or do we already have something?
Right now, we're going to fund the restroom project at the band hall, and then we're working on the academy. We're doing some work.
With those 1.5?
And then we're going to have money for other projects.
For what other projects? Just when things come up?
Like, right now, we need to repair the swimming pool. We need to do some repairs, and there's a lot of needs in that district.
So that's... Okay, so out of the 1.5, where things are going to be fixed? Okay, but what about the increase in curriculum, the increase for school leadership, the truancy? Is that going to be reoccurring? Because the 314 that was budgeted for ESER, well, now we're picking it up because ESER ya no tenemos.
Right.
So my question is, is that going to be yearly?
Yes, it's yearly.
So these expenses, the ones that are increases, that's going to be on a yearly basis?
Yes, sir. And the TIA grant is for the next five years.
Yeah. But in other words, the last paragraph that you put here at the bottom, our fund balance is going down?
From $43 million to $40 million.
Okay, so my question is, next year, we're still going to have some of these expenses? Maybe not the 1.5, but we might add, not the 3.7, but we're going to have like 1.5, más o menos?
Could be.
Well, if we're going to have these expenses, it's going to be.
At least, yeah.
Yes, a lot of school districts, pretty much every school district is going to be in a deficit in the state.
So we are going to be in a deficit?
Next year? Yeah.
So we are now?
And we get more students. The thing is, we're losing students and...
And then there's a 110 decrease in guidance and counseling. Shouldn't that be, if anything, an increase in guidance and counseling?
Because we're paying it from other funds. Some of the expenses are Title I and other things. It's actually like two counselors coming from another fund.
But it's not that we're taking away from the counseling?
No.
No.
We're not. No, we're not.
Because right here, that's kind of what it looks like.
Yeah, but we're doing a lot of extra things with the counseling department.
We're paying those two positions from either special ed or from Title I.
Mr. Alanis, the amount that we're receiving from the state at $2,251, is that for the five years, or that's yearly?
That's for one year. That's yearly. It might change based on the campus and the teachers that are designated. For the next five years, it's going to be...
It could go up. It could go up.
But like Mr. Moreno said, it's a washout. The amount we get, we're going to...
We're going to give it, sir. We're going to get it, we're going to show it on the books, but then we're going to give it out, so it's a hoop, sir.
But we have to show it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Alanis?
But I'd like to state that our fund balance has gone up. And six years ago, where were we at in our fund balance?
We were about $24 million.
And now, after this, we'd be at $40 million. So we have a healthy fund balance.
Yes.
But now that we're on that, the reason we had a healthy fund balance was because of ESER?
Yes.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We don't have ESER anymore. So if in the last five years, we increased from 24, you said 24 to 43, that means that in the next five years, we're going to go down those that what we came up? Because we're not going to have ESER anymore.
And that was the recommendation for all the districts. Use ESER to build up your fund balance, because we're going to need it at least this next year. Hopefully, in the '25, '26, hopefully the state, they have to give us an increase to all the school districts.
So all school districts are facing this right now?
Yes, sir.
And a lot of school districts, their fund balance isn't as healthy as ours. They didn't do the things that we did.
And we've been conservative with expenditures too.
The TIA is funded federally or by the state?
It's a state.
It's a state. So I guess, and hopefully it does it, and hopefully it continues, but they could, next, in one year, in two years down the road, in three years down the road, say, you know what? You know why?
Could happen.
Or they could increase. Or they could increase it either way. That is just something that you can't predict.
Yeah, that's up to the state. Now, the state is going to say, we do away with it, then we don't pay the teachers that designation.
That's the state.
And that's with every district, not just Roma.
No, statewide.
Yeah, statewide.
They guarantee it for five years. For now, it's guaranteed for five years for teachers.
Okay. But back when, our fund balance was way low.
Yes.
Right?
Right.
And how many years ago was that?
About four, four years. And right now, our goal is to have, what? The state recommends us to have at least $18 million.
$18 million.
That's...
And I wasn't here on those years, but that was with the ESER funds already, or...
No. That's what I want to get. If we would not have had ESER, try to say...
We'd be about $25 million.
Where would we be at? We'd still, we would hope...
Be below $25.
We would have held at 24, 25 million.
At the time ESER came in, we were operating on a $4 million deficit.
That's what I'm... Listen, that's what I'm asking you, Mr. Moreno. If we would have not had ESER, and we were operating on a deficit, we were going to hold at 24 million, or were we going to start going down?
Maybe a little bit down, because most of the ESER funding was given to the employees. It was like the retention stipends. Most of the money, 80% of the money went back to the employees, either to retention or...
And we did school supplies.
Unfortunately, in the future, if we don't have those money, we're not going to be able to fund those retention stipends.
Yes.
Sir, if we would not have had ESER, if we would have not, don't mention ESER. If we would have not had ESER, we would not be at this fund balance right now?
We would have managed and trying to be like balanced.
But we were at 24 million with, before ESER, and we were operating, you just said it right now. You just said it right now, we were operating on a deficit.
Yes, and I'm paying the LED lights for over $2 million.
We were not going to come off.
What are you getting at?
Mr. Alanis answered. Were we going to be at, you were going to go down, because we were going down every year?
But we're conservative. We're reducing expenses.
Okay, so we were going to hold at 24?
Retirement incentives and everything helped.
But Mr. Moreno, what is it that you're getting at, sir?
Sir, I'm just saying, because I say one thing, and right away, there's another thing that's saying, oh, look where we're at. I understand, and I applaud where we're at. I applaud where we're at. I'm not saying that. But also be realistic that now, we're going to be in a deficit. That's all I'm saying.
We're...
But that's with every district. We're still healthier in our balance and in our fund compared to other districts. We've been very conservative in the past four years.
I think the business department has done very, very well in managing the funding. And if we had, if we had not gotten ESER, we would have managed one way or another by being conservative, as we are doing now. But with ESER, this district here, along with others, took advantage of that in order to build up the fund balance. Some districts did not. And they're in a bigger hole this year. So congratulations for that.
And exactly, sir. I'm not arguing. I'm just trying to be realistic, so people can know that. In other words, we're going to start going back. In other words, let's just be realistic también. We're not, if there's less money coming in, we're not going to sell. It's just going to start going down.
Well, it's understood, sir. It's understood that that may happen, but we can't be Pollyanna's around here, and the sky is falling. We will deal with whatever the situation is at the time.
And we're okay, because the fund balance has been built. We're there. And yes, it will go down. It could go down. We could be more conservative that it won't go down. Maybe we don't give retention stipends. That's planning we have to do at the board to make sure we get it done. But if ESER funds wouldn't have been here, yeah, we would have been at $25 million. No retention funds would have been offered to teachers. We would have been very conservative. We could be maybe at $23 million, $24 million, but yes. If ESER funds wasn't here, we wouldn't be where we're at. That's true.
And I'm sorry, I've got to answer to Mr. Pedes. You know what? Our thing is to look out for the future, not when we deal, Our thing is to look out for the future, not when we deal, when we deal with a deficit, then we're going to look at it.
Well, sir, no, no, this is, you are misinterpreting what I'm saying. I'm saying, sir, that we always look after, I'm going to answer you now, we always look after our employees and our students. But that if a situation comes up, we will handle it like we're handling it now. This discussion ends. Let's go on with the consideration. Is there a motion on agenda item number nine?
I shall move that we approve the budget amendment number one as presented as item number...
Thank you, Mrs. Cruz. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Cruz and seconded by trustee Moscorro to approve agenda item number nine as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda item number 10, consideration and possible action to approve amended 2024 summer school budget proposal. Our district federal programs director, Mrs. Yadida Diaz, will make the presentation. Mrs. Diaz.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, board members, and superintendent Gonzalez. You should have a yellow folder labeled summer program budget and timeline proposal. The following changes being proposed. Additional funding was received from the ATSI PEP, which is the additional day school year planning and execution program grant. Therefore, the recommendation is to add one student teacher, I'm sorry, one student tutor per elementary campus and one to each middle school campus. So the teacher supplies were also included from last time. So the summer program budget proposal and timeline have been updated to include those changes. Are there any questions?
No, just clarification. You said through the ATSI program, there's going to be student tutors?
Eight being added.
Okay.
One for each campus, elementary, and one for each middle school. So there are eight.
That's where those extra eight are coming from?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mrs. Diaz?
For the extension of the ATSI was approved.
I know that last time they had talked about that extension, is that what you mean?
Yes.
That was approved, I, well, I don't know that it was approved, because I'm not handling that, the ATSI. I know that you all were pending approval. Remember that, the additional money that was coming in?
Yes. So the student tutors were 28 in total that we approved the last board meeting?
Yes.
So now you're adding eight more.
Eight additional.
Yeah, so that's 30, 36.
36.
Those eight were, are alternates the first time around?
I, yes, they're alternates.
And then there are others that moved up?
And then whatever moved up, right. Have you already met with them to... Yes, but to let them know that they got approved so that they can get there. Approved. So anybody declined or no? Good. Everybody said yes, good.
Very good. Any other questions for Mrs. Diaz? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Barrera and seconded by trustee Escobar to approve agenda item number 10 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll go to agenda item number 11, consideration possible action on approving additional recommendations for summer 2024 student tutors. Our presenter will be our district bilingual director, Mrs. Marisa Valmonte.
I'll be doing that one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Pedis and members of the board, I ask that we approve the additional recommendations for the summer 2024 student tutors as listed in board book.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Those are the ones that were just mentioned by Ms....
Yes, and they're listed in board book.
Yes.
Okay. If there is no further discussion, then there is a motion on the floor by trustee Barrera and seconded by trustee Moscorro to approve agenda item number 11 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number 12, consideration possible action on approving additional summer school employment recommendations. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pedis. I ask Mr. Pedis and members of the board that we approve the additional summer school recommendations as that were listed in board book.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I shall move that we approve the additional summer school employment.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Cruz and seconded by trustee Barrera to approve agenda item number 12 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 I'll abstain.
Okay, sir. Five in favor, none opposed, one absent, and one abstention. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda item number 13, consideration possible action to approve Roma High School head band director. Our presenter, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir. President Pedis and members of the board, I'm asking the board to approve Juan Mireles as the new Roma High School head band director.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Ms. Gonzalez? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of Mr. Gonzalez to appoint Juan Mireles as the Roma High School head band director.
Okay, to hire, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Moscorro and seconded by trustee Escobar to approve agenda item number 13 as presented, hiring, the recommendation of hiring Mr. Mireles as the next high school head band director. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Before I go any further, I want to address Ms. Laurel. Ms. Laurel is now a member of our administrative staff as the district elementary music and art director. Welcome onboard, Mrs. Laurel. And I know Mr. Mireles has got big, big shoes to fill.
Yeah, as we discussed, she doesn't have a big shoe, but those are big shoes to fill, right?
Well, we'll go to agenda item number 14, employment and resignation of professionals and paraprofessionals. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir. President Pedis and members of the board, I ask the board to approve the employment and resignation of professionals and paraprofessionals as listed in board book.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I shall move that we approve Mr. Gonzalez's recommendations for employment and resignation of professionals and...
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Cruz and seconded by trustee Barrera to approve agenda item number 14 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number 15, adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Moreno, seconded by trustee Moscorro to adjourn this regular meeting. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed. Motion carries. One absent. It is now 7:35 PM, and this regular meeting of the Roma Independent School District Board of Trustees for the month of April 2024 is adjourned. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We wish all of you a most...